And call the meeting to order, since we do have a quorum. First thing on the agenda is to approve the meeting agenda for today. I need a first and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, okay, all in favor? Right. Okay. Moving on to item four. Is, there's no. There's no public. There's no public, right? The library board of trustees annual report, is this the report you used to give to the city and then the city said they didn't care about it?
This report has a long-term story to history, and I'm going to be totally honest in why it's back in the packet.
Okay.
Because Jen has been dutifully going through all policies as part of her new being newer position. And in some policy, it said that we submit this every year, but we can't remember which policy it was in. So I, last year I did a lot of legwork with the city, being like, do you need this? They also said, no. So we're not exactly sure where it ended up, but because it is an active policy that we both saw, we are bringing it back.
Well, I appreciated it. I mean, I enjoyed reading it.
I seeing everything.
Even though it's supposedly our report and we didn't do the work, but.
So we went back and looked at some sort of, in the sort of farther distance past. Documents, those documents, because I feel like I had kind of gotten us off. I got more into, are they library gold, are they board gold, who's board gold are they? So we tried to craft this more like the earlier versions. And I think that this to me feels more probably like it's supposed to be than the last couple that I've brought to the table. And my hope would be that maybe that, that means it will resonate more with this group, or there'll be maybe fewer meetings that we have to go through with it. But we don't have to, we've got plenty of time. So the whole year that you worked together, kind of going through what we thought would be board level accomplishments. And then thinking about the goals for the coming year. So I, I'm totally open to whatever process the board wants to take with this, whether he wants to read it now. Do work between meetings, give feedback now, have us bring another draft back. Whatever that looks like to get to something that feels like you're ready to approve it.
That's a quick question, and I've been working on these for years, so I know how this works. But when you said, we're to submit this and we don't know where we're submitting it to and who's the recipient?
I think.
I'm not sure why we're doing this. It's one thing if we say we're doing it for our own record keeping, so that we have a history, but when we say we're doing it for submission.
I think it goes to finance, but.
The city finance?
The city finance. And that's where it used to go, to go in the old version.
It's interesting that we would target to whoever the audience is that we're submitting it to. And if it's finances, this is the expert information they want, or do they want financial information?
I think you just want the finance because they're the ones that put together the budget book. And do you think you are historically?
It's a state requirement for the board trustees to submit some sort of report to the city that the.
That's why, okay, that's who, okay. Boy, you would think the city wouldn't know, right?
There've been a lot of staff changes over there.
And I don't think it's a bad thing if it does show up on the website under the board. I mean, I don't.
But then the audience is public.
If it's, if this is indicative of what the report could look like, I mean, I, I appreciate the work that went into it. But it's not pages and pages and agonizing over the goals for next year. I mean. Was it a lot of work? I guess that's the question.
No, I would say it was, it was all of us in a room thinking about it, but it didn't. It actually was kind of a fun conversation, what you're thinking about, what would rise to this level and what would be. What would be the board's thought about it? So I think that, no, the work that's going into it so far has been, has been fine. And we're, like I said, absolutely happy to take feedback and keep trying to get it closer to what, if there are changes that we want to make, that's fine. Bring it back to your scope.
Are we talking about item four under goals to set? To develop a plan for, because it's always been, all the discussions so far to the city. But this also includes a Johnson County Board of Supervisors.
Can we do reports?
Yes, so that would be one of the. Goals, we talked about it in the past of having a more formalized way to, to sort of share our work with the board of supervisors. So because we've talked about it, but we haven't taken a lot of action, I thought, we probably, as a goal would be, at least get it back on our radar and more likely to, to actually get a, give a plan.
We have before presented before the board.
Yes.
Of supervisors, and we've tried to make that into an annual thing or a special event. Like educational issue saying, we're going to go after our bookmobile and here we go, and we brought the trustees saying like, this is what we're going to be doing, but. Depends on times, there was a rhythm for that we started, but then COVID disrupted so much.
Yeah, because we went to one together.
We went to one, so with Susan, so I'm the county representative from the board supervisors and. We, I went every year and talked to them about something, but Susan and I would go together because they might have questions. And Cara usually was. And then when you came in, it's just, I think COVID disrupted our momentum.
That's true.
All of these issues.
So we could go, just go back to that model.
Yeah, we asked just to be on the agenda and kind of gave an update and so this is, these are the new initiatives and because it acknowledges their funding, their contribution. And sometimes it's proactive for us to let them know what we're doing. So they ask us the questions before they come to the conclusions.
And one way to do to sort of prompt that revenue would be to put it online.
Right, whatever they think would be appropriate, yeah, whatever.
Then it would remind us to prepare that report.
They're usually very appreciative. I mean, they kind of surprised that we do it, but.
Well, I think a lot of the fact that we don't know where this is supposed to go, that is a pretty good goal for next year.
Personally, I'm comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with. The accomplishment, I think we didn't include here, and I, maybe it was the year before and I'm messing my spirits, the time freeze up. But we did some exploration of usage patterns and I'm defining inequities and usage. We did that in relationship to the, the fine issue, but I think it matches the city's goals of looking at some of that. Was that within this calendar year?
I was shutting that up, so it had to have been.
Yeah.
I turned it in December and I looked at it.
Yeah, you looked at it.
Some, it wasn't the first iteration of the map, like a hotspot.
Yeah, like a heat map.
You brought that back.
I saw that and so that we've been aware of. Had to have been this year because I looked.
It would be a way of adding that to the accomplishments of.
You're right. Analysis or exploration or discussion of. Inequitable usage patterns or access patterns. I think it was usage patterns with the goal of access, looking at access issues. I think the staff carried a lot of that, but it was at least a good discussion for the board.
Yeah, we could add that, so we'll add something about analysis of inequable use of patterns. With the goal of moving deeper access.
Right, or at least acknowledging the barriers that we may be responsible for, like, or do find issues.
Okay, we could add that as number one.
But it's on the notes in this calendar year, but, but people can remember it, then I had to.
Yeah, I remember, and I started in December, so it had to have been, had to have been.
Did we also state the advocacy for? The advocacy letter that we did?
I thought I saw that.
When I saw it too.
Saving of support of intellectual freedom on behalf of the library board.
Okay. Rage is best. So. This requires a vote. It says board action required. Are we ready to vote to approve it or not? Okay. All in favor of accepting the FY22 board annual report? Need a motion with the adjustment made that, that's sorry, how it's going to make.
I'm moving the meeting along.
We also need a movement in the second.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the FY22 board annual report.
I'll move to approve it with the edit that we discussed, second.
All in favor?
Hi. Sorry, Carol.
No, thank you. Okay, strategic plan review.
I bet this was more work.
Yeah, so it's always fun to have a catch to, to the board to take a look at. There's probably nothing too surprising on the plan at this point, since we've all been moving into our third year with it. I, I do think it's important at the annual updates to include the, the full plan, which can be a lot of the dating, trans, and time. So that's in case you felt like you've got a good handle on the rest of it, you just want to leave the, the newer edited. So this is always a group effort. We, this is the first year that we tried doing the quarterly updates. So this might be left as like a bigger wheel in other years, but probably nothing much we haven't at least heard about or working on. And we're really trying to sort of move away from a figure planet filled by the checklist and focus on those. Those, a little bit of the bigger projects, so. It might, it might feel a little different in other years, but we're trying to do it systematically. And I, when I was putting it together, I felt like, again, just so proud of what the staff has continued to do through all of the piles and the reasons that have come up. I, I feel proud of it. I shared it with, with staff, which has provided them of all the available work that's been done. And I hope that they share that pride and recognize how much they've done and contribute. But we're absolutely open to any questions or thoughts about things that are included.
And a small clarifying question, when, in goal one, number two, that migrate the digital history project, it's talking about a new public facing website. Is that, that's just a website for that digital history project, like it's like a whole library?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought.
And one of the, one of the things I would tend to do going through this iteration, at the last big update, we got some board feedback. Just encouraging sort of removal of Guardian and to really kind of make it sort of a non-library person could read and understand. So anything you notice like that that we've been, keep clarifying, keep working on, making it clear, love that feedback.
As a newbie here, I had a lot of questions because I didn't know what other things were. The digital history project, I have no idea what that is, but it's being migrated. I, it's, I don't know, you can't explain everything, but. I had that and also low contact printing. I don't know what the low contact printing is. Although everybody else may know it.
It's just our way of saying, we don't want to have to tuck your book into the same stuff, really. I think it was developed during, when we were just reopening from COVID. So in the old printing days, you might have to pass us your library card or share materials like that.
Yeah.
Right, Jason? We went down to a more three-word process.
And it's since, I mean, we're still in COVID, high COVID, but.
Yeah.
But we are sort of spinning that off to mean just even meaning low contact of like less staff interaction even. So we're sort of still running with the idea of making it more, less about the COVID and more about just like salt service.
Well, I think a lot of businesses do the same thing now, right? That's their thing, you know, no contact ordering and.
So somebody want to give an overview of the digital history project, or John?
So the digital history project is a website that hosts photographs or documents of Iowa City or governor's county history. It started out as a collaboration between the Johnson County Historical Society and us. We digitized some of the materials that they had in hand about downtown Iowa City. We've expanded that to other partners as well. It's an old website, like it's a very old infrastructure in the back. It's, it's really complicated. Some of those images that we have might be a whole city directory. It's taking some time to get things to start working in the owner. So what we're trying to do with the new website is to make it more browsable, more searchable, easier to navigate when you're in a more, like a larger image or a larger item. So we're hoping that by migrating our website into a new system, backend system, that we can add four more things from our archives as well. That will be a little bit more sophisticated system.
And how about the digitized newspapers? Are they there too, the local ones, or are they separate?
They're a separate website because we, we pay the company to do that. And they have their own, we might add more now that some of those years have gotten anything. So we have a historical Iowa City newspaper website that we're digitizing newspapers in Iowa City that are out of copyrights. And now we're moving along and we have the.
Any other questions, John?
I can't wait to see it. I do get on there a lot, especially with the hearing about the promise of that exchange building, that's.
Yeah, I know, or we're overhauling everything, including search terms, metadata assigned to the book. It comes to a lot of work.
Yeah, especially with metadata.
Did you have other questions, John?
Other questions?
Oh, I did have a.
Okay.
I think the question is, who's the audience for this? And that's what the, you don't need to, presumably for this group now, I've heard what a digital history program is and why it's being migrated. But you know, if this is for the public, you need to have some, on these particular kinds of issues, need to have some brief explanation of what it is. But if it's an internal document, you don't, but I'm not quite sure what the purpose of this is.
I mean, it's, it's both really. It's, it's our work plan for three years. But as a public entity, it's also shared with the public to, for us to share accountability and to sort of say, these are, these are our priorities right now. You will notice that we're focusing on these over other things. So it really kind of serves two purposes. We do have an internal version that has more, it has sort of who's assigned to work on these things, sometimes more timeline information. More granular, the things we need to take, to tackle those projects. But this, we, we try to write it with also a high for public consumption. So that if people are curious or they want to know more about the library, this is frequently a document that they'd look at. So I would say both. But we could certainly, I mean, I, I wonder if doing sort of a. Almost a footnote version might be helpful so that we didn't make it chunkier in its current document, but we could say, you know, you want to learn about the digital history projects? It's in the back, section A, and whatever next one is in section B, or sort of annotate that way. At least with a public version, that might be, that wouldn't be particularly complex. We probably have summaries of most of these projects that were done for other programs, so.
Well, you could also just. Put a link to the, to the website, right, for the digital history project. What?
I said, as long as it's not embedded, leaving out like ADA stuff. Oh, embedded links, sorry. Easier.
This, my impression over the years on the board is that this library takes the strategic planning process very seriously. And it really does drive their work and it drives, it, it, to me, it drives the work and it drives the. It just makes things move along and, and makes them accountable. I, I mean, I'm very impressed with their strategic planning process. Having worked in institutions where you do it because every five years someone decides we need to do it and, and then they don't pay any attention. So. And I do like the format. I, I appreciate, I think last time, maybe last time you didn't put in the stuff that didn't get changed. So I, I think this is great. The shading is really, is really great.
Yeah, it's a good idea. I'm just curious what the, you talk about the newspaper coverage and the survey that was conducted last month. But we don't find out what the survey found, except that it led to savings. This is newspaper coverage. To determine whether the collection meets browsing needs.
I think it was going to be revisited this fall, right? And maybe there would be. I think I remember reading that, that it, that same investigation of newspaper reading is going to be revisited to see before dispositions are finally made. I can't get it now. Now I can't find it, but I recall.
Item four.
Okay.
That's the first of the studies.
Again, it's not a major thing. I just, if, if, for a reader of this, you think, what were the results of that survey that led to savings? Are you cutting out some of the newspapers?
Is the key there. Yeah, like, because some newspapers cost less than a hundred dollars per an annual subscription. Some costs more like eight hundred dollars per an annual subscription. And so looking at the June study, we identified a couple of papers that had almost no use that, that month, that costs a significant amount of money. In terms of what a newspaper costs, but not in terms of what the material budget is. So I mostly wrote that as a, if we do this second course of study during the academic year and we see similar numbers, then we may see like. These are our significant savings in, in the newspaper budget.
We could add some details there.
I actually had one on, is page 12. It is the first objective, 12% community aspirations, where it says in collective, in collection services is the bottom of the page. Selectors track purchases of new print items that met diversity audit parameters. I guess I would like to know a little bit more about what audit parameters are, either in an addendum or something. Because it's saying young adult and children's materials met or exceeded the goal, but 12% of new title purchases met the parameters. I guess that just. It's just like a little more clarification on what the parameters were and.
I, and I, I don't know what month we, we did it, but we did our own in-house diversity audit of our young adult collection. And our staff set up some parameters using. A variety of either socioeconomic status or religious, different. Different parameters on what it needs, and we tried to use those parameters in our purchasing to see what we could match up with. Sometimes it's very difficult to do when you're doing with a publication announcement, there might be nothing.
Right, right.
Be like, the author has a new book and then we bought it and we didn't identify it at that point. And I think from doing this for the year, there was a lot of issues with using those parameters and applying them. Because our selection process doesn't sometimes work out. We have a lot of things that are on automatic order, like.
Right.
A list of authors, you might, I'm wondering if I'm going to see those because they're just automatic order. So we're going to look back and see, we can do subject headings or use any other cues that we use on our records to see if our purchasing, the way that we were doing it was. Was the right way, and it's not, there's some holes in it. So good for a year, it's not working very well for a group thing.
And that's like in relationship to the audit that you used Ingram for.
Yes.
Right, that was like an in-house, like that's your current collection?
Yeah, we did our own in-house audit where we touched every single book in the young adult collection and we actually, and not me, myself. And, and really worked to see, reading reviews about those books. It took hours and we could only do it because we were closed.
Right.
And so then we hired Ingram to do one of our entire print collection and theirs was just not comparative to the quality of our in-house one. To the degree where we're not entirely sure what to do with those results because they're really competitive. So we tried to apply the work that we put into our young adult fiction in-house audit to purchasing materials, but there was also.
I see, I see. I'm assuming, I guess, here's nerdy. I'm assuming Ingram is looking mostly at subject headings.
Yes.
Okay.
Baker and Taylor has a product.
Right, I've used the Fallout one.
Yeah.
Like I regularly use the Fallout one.
They use purchase material, or purchase. And.
So you're at the mercy of your subject headings.
Yes.
Right, right.
The other avenue that we're thinking of is, we, a couple of staff members went to an innovative conference and they found how to use your own catalog and terms for that. But we're going to have to do some subject heading work to get it to be.
Sure.
The way that we want it to be. So there's some exciting things in the future that I think. We just have some, a little bit of, start work.
Can I answer?
Yeah, no, that was really. I was, I'm doing the same thing in a small, much smaller scale, and so I'm just curious.
Just needs a diverse approach, right?
Well. It sounds like you have at least one objective for the next strategic plan already in place.
Yeah, that's the whole, yeah, collection services.
Oh, yeah, and as they update subject heading, and they keep updating subject headings too, so your work will never be done.
But don't get discouraged.
Other comments about the strategic plan? Okay, we're not required to vote on that. So this is the end of one fiscal year, so there'll be one more finale for this plan. Okay, a policy review, the, the bylaws. The committee did do its work, but not, just not quite the very last step, which was to communicate to Jen that it needed to go out 10 days before the board meeting. So according to, according to the bylaws, changes to the bylaws have to have been sent to the board 10 days before the meeting. So we're going to vote on the bylaws in August. However, they are included here, so if, if you've looked at them and have comments. We have plenty of time to get them incorporated. Otherwise, we'll, we'll bring it up for a meeting for a vote in August. The three main things were to address electronic participation because we've gotten a little, I don't know, it never was really an issue before. That big of an issue before COVID and then COVID kind of changed the world. And so we wanted to address that and we wanted to address the public comment time. Generally, public comment is, is a non-issue. It, every once in a while feels like it's going to be an issue. So far, in my tenure, it has not. But the city council went to a big rules and regulations revision of its policies and stuff. And so we sort of used some of their, their things. What was the other, there was one more. Things, the definition of quorum, and I don't know, I was like, there's something more important than that. It may be, maybe changing the definition of quorum because we don't always have. we don't always have a full nine-member board. So I don't know if people have looked at it or not. If you have comments, please offer them, otherwise we'll revisit this in August. Um, okay. So then we're down to item four, part D, and that's the city's new policy for bereavement leave?
Yep. See, um, put out and adopted a new, an expansion of bereavement leave of the state parks and city. The, actually, representations I already signed it, as you saw. Um, I don't see any changes that need to be made. It was a positive. Thanks for all staff, um, and we would recommend that it be um, approved for the board to the region about it as a, as a library policy.
So I, I move that we adopt this as library policy. Second. All in favor? Um, moving on. The another COVID fallout was a disruption of our regular practice of holding a board dinner generally in August. Um, I wasn't even sure if this was something we did every other year or something we did every year. It seems, Robin remembers that we did it every year, just that we haven't done it for two years. Um.
I think it's even more than that, it seems like, because we had some scheduling challenges. It might be three years.
I think we had ours.
Been a while.
Yeah, when, when we. Same birds back then, I don't think.
Well, the, so, did you go to one?
Yep.
Yeah, twenty nineteen. It's been a while.
Okay, so twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, so two years where we didn't do it.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So. I guess the, the, do we want to resume the board dinner and then if people would wanna weigh in on um, what would be an appealing um, venue or?
So I just want to comment, this is not a board, this was not a board dinner just for us to have a meal together. It was to acknowledge on people who had come off the board and to get to know people, new people that come on. So it was a chance to have conversations beyond just sitting there. Uh, but we had a lot of people leave the board who gave lengthy terms of who are in the room right now.
And also it includes um, the, the staff, not, not the entire staff, right? Just the, the.
Managers.
Yeah, the coordinator staff. And spouses. Um, it has in the past been a um, basically everybody pays their own share.
The.
Except for new people and people who are, have rotated off the board. So those people, um, we pick up their, their share. Um. It has most often been at a restaurant. Um. Which was really easy when Susan's, I was caring, her son owned a restaurant. Um, so we, we need to find a, we would need to find a venue um, that would, you know, hold, I don't know, how many people usually?
Well, we've done different venues. We've done one twenty-six, we've done it in where it was Atlas and it's now a different place. We've done it in Bricks. So we've done it, or one twenty-six Moonbreakers, we did it in upstairs part. So we've done it in a lot of different, it's not just the one that his son owns.
So, am I right in assuming that this is something that would appeal to people, to, to reinstitute this practice? Okay, well then, um, I guess elsewhere, you and I and others could get together and figure something out. Um. I don't, I don't know if we can manage this by August. It may have to be successful.
I think one of the challenges we had in the past is sometimes people are still traveling in August too. And so it got hard, just because a lot of people still think of that as part of the summer. And so attendance, that tricky, maybe, maybe not being able to organize it by August is not necessarily an all bad thing.
And how about, how about timing? Is it best for people to do it after the board meeting or would it be better to do it on a Saturday afternoon or sometime where you didn't? You know, if the meeting runs till six thirty and then you have to, I mean, I don't know, but must have come back too.
It was, right, they'd have to come back.
Well, we can, we can get together and, and work out some details and maybe, um, I can maybe if we can make some progress elsewhere, I can send out a a message and get some feedback.
So just, I know I'm just being a little bit of a, a, a annoyance on this, but I just want to make sure we think about the fact that we didn't, well, we didn't have a couple of years or a few people that rotated off that perhaps we should include, not just the very last people. You know, just COVID stopped us from including people over a longer period.
That, that, yeah. Monique, Monica, John, and who was the other one that rotated off?
Who?
Kelly. No, she didn't rotate off with Monique and John though. There was another one.
But she'd be.
Cause she's with me, she's in our group, except she left a year early. She, Claire replaced her.
Huh?
Daniel was here briefly.
Yeah, but there's another one. There's John and Monique and there was another.
Yeah, this is going back. Just to be inclusive.
We'll go back and look.
Yeah, okay.
It's been a couple of years.
Yeah, it's been a few years. Oh, Wes. Oh, Wes, of course. Wes, Wes was a fill-in for somebody.
We never celebrate with us. I think that's important.
Okay.
Our memories are so flawed, maybe we.
Can all have closer friends?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, staff reports. Elsewhere, you're up first.
Yeah, I'll actually kind of, I'm addressed to this month, I felt like, um, up here on a development position, um, and they remember a lot of jobs. We do not get updates on applications until the position closes, so we've got nothing to move to there. Um. We're working on the, telling the things, but the work schedule is to, to be as clear as possible from the one thing that we have of how this may or may not work at the library. Um. When there'll be more about that next month, you know. Um, the only thing that I have to add to this is I was sure to receive a few, let's say, four or five community member questions about monkeypox in the library and if we are making the adjustments thus far. If we have set benchmarks for when we might consider changing practices. Um, my response so far has been, of course, we are actively watching and ready to respond if there were to be um, county or state or federal, you know, suggestions, like, like, what we could do. But at this point, we're, we're mostly um, watching the progression and, and paying attention to, to the news about what's happening. Um, so I do think people are attuned to that and will maybe be expecting some kind of, um, feedback, answer it to be clearer messages about exactly how it's spread and what the dangers are, but um, that's, otherwise, I'm happy to answer questions about anything on my report.
Um. I, under library coordinator development position update, um, you said you'd like to include a trustee in some part of the interview process. As the details are finalized, you'll reach out. If anybody here is, would really want to do that, please let me know so that when he does reach out, I don't overlook someone who would really wanna do it. Okay.
I think there's a couple ways that could manifest. We're, we're thinking about having a presentation as part of the, um, part of the process. If we do that, we really could invite the entire board. The caveat would be, we'd, we'd really need people who could be at home. So that would probably call the group a little bit right there. Um, but if that doesn't feel like enough involvement or you'd like to be differently involved, you know, we haven't, we haven't started to schedule interviews yet, so there's the flexibility there.
Okay, well, when you, when you're ready to, um, ask, then let me know and I'll reach out to, to the board.
We do.
Hey, ask your question. I want to ask a question and I'm not sure my timing's right. Could have been down and comments later, but um, how extensive was the fire in Cedar Rapids Library and is there anything we can do that reach out?
I reached out to Dara and we sort of said, hey, like, sorry to hear about this. Um, it sounds like it was that all systems worked as designed, that um, sprinkled only enough where they should have. It sounded like there was no, no water damage to books is what we hear right now. But I don't know about smoke damage and things like that, so.
My, if this is the right time to ask a couple of just general library questions. Is it appropriate for us to reach out to the, to aim Cedar Falls Library?
We've talked about that, um, to start to decide what is appropriate.
Yeah, I don't know what's appropriate. It's just.
Um, I mean, I.
It's the library community.
I, I guess.
Just individually.
My conclusion is we could sign a card from.
I, I, I don't have a recommendation. I just, when I saw that their library is marking, you know, say the building.
Yeah.
They're, they're forcing that identity.
I actually was thinking that tomorrow afternoon I could drive home and drop off.
Maybe that's all it needs to be. I don't know.
Something, um, it's, it's so hard to know what would be, having the guests, knowing that there's some support there, that they're worth anything about them. Um. But we'll.
Yeah, I, I don't know what's appropriate. So I wasn't making a recommendation. I just was wondering if there's anything. People know what I'm talking about.
I know.
Go for it.
Um, the, the, um, state park shooting that happened, the, there was a, a family that was killed and the, the woman was a library worker at Cedar Falls Public Library. Uh, it sounded like she was doing some exciting initiatives and really had sort of found her place and, and everything was, things were going great and so it was, uh, the worry, uh, pointing, not just being part of the larger community, but, um, having that be a loss in the library world. Um. And it's, it's a difficult place to know what's the appropriate support to give because, you know, we, there's a lot we can't do for you, but just, I guess to know that. Um, I mean, honestly, food is a very common backroom gift. We know libraries like that, um, they, they be taking some, some backroom treats and flowers and a card would be sent out, and so, so, what we could sign from the library and the board and and then take over. But I, I think this will be a this is the trauma on top of, um, you know, a lot of library stress that's been going on. And, um, and lots of connections. I mean, we all, we have people on our staff who've got presentations with that group and it's like, um. But I, I'll do, I'll figure something out tomorrow.
And I, I don't want to tell you I have an answer. I don't, I just was wondering if there's a way to be supportive.
Um, I do realize, I did not really explain why the study on burnout, uh, or library.
I was going to ask.
So I included that because I went back and forth on it. That was released at ILA after sort of a lot of lead up, um, before.
The study on trauma, is that what you're?
Yes, um, and it's really gotten a lot of, um, a lot of press in the library world. Uh, it feels like you know, pretty major entities in libraries have, you know, picked it up, have looked to it, have talked about it, have talked about how it's, you know, it resonates with how they feel. Um, and I think it's important because I don't know, for the last maybe year, it feels like when you pick up a trade publication, there's so much about how library job they're changing, how morale is, is, is terrible, how um, is this worker exploitation to expect people to work with mentally ill customers? Is it? There's this buildup of dialogue around sort of mental health and should staff be sort of rising up and demanding more support around it. And I think this study did an interesting job sort of pulling a number of those issues together. Um, and I, I think it's it is important to see what that narrative looks like. Because I think you will hear it from our staff. I think you will see it when you go to ILA. I think that it, uh, that it is very prevalent in the library world right now. And I, I would hate to have someone kind of walk into those things unprepared and be thinking, you know, the library does these amazing MCs that we support and we love and they're doing great work. And have this kind of a tidal wave of, of this more negative uh, feeling come at you. I, one of my concerns when I look at this, and I'm not questioning the validity of it at all. I think it's an important part of the story, but I do feel like we're losing the thought of where does sort of the customer service data and where does the service component of our work continue to fit? Um. And I think it's, you know, it's, to me, it's about finding that balance of how we make sure staff feel supported in their whole selves, but we also are focusing on the community and doing that publication work. So that's why I included it. I know it was long, hopefully just given the parts that were killable to you, but, um, I I do feel like the, the trend in library land right now has been sort of that more negative narrative. And I'm hopeful that things will start to level. There were some concrete suggestions in this particular study that, um, I, I plan to include as I write a Thursday message to the staff every week. I'm gonna summarize the board meeting and then talk a little bit about the folks who have read this study, is their interest in a, a staff discussion around it. Um, do, do people wanna try to maybe look at some of those suggestions and think about, you know, there's really nothing stopping us from starting up our regional library worker support group. We could host that. We could share hosting responsibilities. We could, um, there are things that we could do if people feel that'd be helpful. Um, so that's why I put it in that. Because I think it's within other contexts.
So, um, I don't, I'm, I, I know that registration started for ILA, but I don't know, I didn't look at it. So I don't know what, if there's gonna be conference sessions relevant to the study.
Relevant to the conference session, yeah.
Are you one of the conferences?
It's burning up and you're also, because Cedar Falls incident, kind of coming up with an on-conference session with those, and kind of just kind of them each other.
Maybe someone should say, if you, if you don't see how the ILA conferences and your opportunity to attend it. Maybe this is for new board members. Maybe so. I don't know who's the right person here to speak down to.
Joe, you probably know the most about how we, it's kind of, it's, so ILA is the state library, the Iowa Library Association's conference. They have an annual conference. This year it's in Coralville, which is very convenient to us, um, location-wise. And it's a, a state library conference, so it sort of covers school library, all different kinds of libraries. Um. The bigger libraries are typically more represented just because we have more resources and a lot more folks to go. Um, but there is sort of, or there's always supposed to be kind of a board track as well. So programs, sessions that support board development or continuing it for, for board members. And the library, Jim, is that the library pays for board members register, their ILA membership?
Yeah.
And also the registration for the conference?
Yeah.
So if you're interested in going, you have a window link out to what the conference has, then you can either go for the full thing or one day of it. Um. It's a pretty good opportunity that's cloaked by, um, as, as far as onsite learning goes. Um. And in the future, you, you know, you might be inspired to submit a proposal to present there. You know, you could get involved in ILA, you could do different things as part of the organization, but the library does cover uh, your membership and if you'd like to go. uh, your membership and if you'd like to go to the conference. And, and when is this? It's in October. And how long? Two days?
Usually, really, Tuesday and Friday, so it's Wednesday night and then Thursday and Friday.
And it's, um, they always have an option that you can, you know, go to, to either all of it or if you just want to pick one or two days. Um, you can do that.
And there's, there'll be a trustee subdivision meeting, so you can, there, if they show up and meet trustees from other libraries. Um, if you don't have people on there, I just want to tell people, like, you belong there, the first time I went, I thought, ah, do I really, like, is this my community? It is, I mean, go and walk through and you see the booths and you, you hear some of the, the larger topic discussions of what's going on in the library. So then you hear some real tool-based presentations of what's going on in libraries, so it's really kind of intriguing, if you think I can't afford to go for this two plus days. Pick the times you want to go, I remember the first time I went, I think Susan had called a couple of us at lunch and said, you know, you're supposed to be going, there's a subdivision meeting and none of you guys are there, and I never even thought of it as something that I should be doing, and I was really glad I went because I first thing you meet some of the local trustees from Coralville and Sullen and some of these other libraries, but then you meet people from across the state. Um, and it's really, it, it's worth the time, I sometimes, well, it's worth the time, even if you think you can only have an hour or something, good time to talk. It's worth the time.
And sometimes the keynotes we got this year is, is really good.
Time rushing through, um, as I was not lying.
Oh, okay.
And then as the VP of ILA, man, also maybe as a member, you also get to go to legislative days, um, you're invited to speak on behalf of libraries at that point. My leader's there, so we're in a lot of potential, just.
But, but, you know, I think it's a trustee when I first heard, I thought, I don't know if that's, like, what am I supposed to do about this? Um, supposed to kind of explore, you know, and find your place in it. And help shape it, because in the future, there could be a stronger trustee identity there. If people actively participate, I think it's another thing that we're building it and it lost momentum during COVID, big surprise, um, it's time to rebuild.
It is really fun to meet people from across the state and see the breadth and projects they're doing.
And I, I, I think the, the big topics, discussions from experts are really intriguing. Because I just see my perspective as a user, and when you see it from people who are spending their careers doing this, it's, it's really educational.
You went, we went together when it was up in Cedar Rapids.
Yeah, once or twice, yeah, and, and we, we just, we didn't spend the night, we went up and back, but. You don't have to spend the night, there's only Coralville.
It, it's, it's kind of fun. Cause I recall the food was really, really bad the year that we went.
No matter what conference, that's like.
People say the food's bad.
I've been on the conference planning committee and that's the one that people will complain about the most. As a conference planner, I encourage you to never complain about that.
Right, and I don't even bother.
It was terrible, we, you know. It was always terrible, period.
One conference I was at, at that hotel had good food, so.
Okay, well, I, actually, I went to one there, too.
Only I might have still been a working librarian. Yeah, they've been there a few times, but, just, so if you're thinking about it, Jen takes care of paperwork, she did mine today. So, okay, moving on to the next staff report, which would be adult services.
What SWB?
Uh, it's a switchboard.
Okay.
I, when I typed it out, I was like, this cell is too large, and, and I surely all explained.
Okay, well, no, you did, it's good.
Those are all the incoming calls, and that's part of it.
I love the pictures.
Yes, I've got about eighty more of the photo, produce photos, if you want to see them. But I.
My daughter would.
They're all very good, and it will make another return to the.
That is my most favorite weekend activity, going to the market, so.
Sure.
Um, all right, how about, um, next report, community and access services?
I would like to show that you, I have two photos from the photos, because I love it. Um, and the banana that some teenagers bake, where it's a banana reading and has like a whole show, and we'll just move to the book and photos letter and their spotlight. And you're invited to answering the questions, those are wanted to do with us.
I also love the pictures of all those students with their lighter cards, very heartwarming, they seem so excited.
Best, best working nights of my, really, Sam.
Really?
Always volunteered to do these chores.
And I didn't, I didn't, so this is something that's been going on for a while.
Yes.
I didn't, did not know, I, it is, it's, it's really cool.
Um, who initiated that part?
So, who initiated it was us, um, and, uh, I kind of, kind of thought it as, you'll tell us what you need and we will make it happen. So I think we got significantly more listeners this year than we have in the past, and really the library, we're following that in form of more history. Really wonderful, we have English constituents tell us what they believe in the states and use the company, they tell us how this is their library. So, I'm hoping you, you know, that would be our holiday topic of the year, because why not read this right?
Okay, other comments? Hey Patty?
Hi, you have an update about the book sale and sidewalk days, with a great name to start the year for my husband and the sidewalk sale and the book end, we raised about a hundred dollars. Here, there's things that have been seen personally, the weather was stormy, hot and humid, so we stayed in the library lobby. We didn't get to use our tents, so, okay, people were very excited. And, I think happy to answer any questions?
That's pretty good money, right?
Four hours, five hours? Very, very good start.
What's the second, Patty's last?
I know. It's another reason we need that dinner.
I hope the guy helped, I mean, get it to them.
What? No, 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 no.
It's okay, well, we'll keep up that, but, yeah, thank you very, very much to all of you and I'll thank you in advance for continuing the very generous gifting that you do to support the library. So then hopefully going forward, we can, every board member gives for our lovely institutions, I would say, and great, thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, we will miss you, but I'm sure that you will.
Thank you.
Appreciate not having to go after those monies all the time, contact all those businesses.
I have not, someone told me that, you know, it's time to stop fundraising, when people turn around when they see. Oh my God. So, I, I'm going out on a high note.
Well, I think, I mean, I, I think the foundation is amazing, I, I really.
Thank you, I did look back elsewhere and suggest that maybe I should, uh, reprise my first report in two thousand four. Uh, which I looked at, we were very excited to bring in eight thousand dollars back. Oh my God, period, so, the first year we raised sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, I'm very, very excited about that. So now we averaging four hundred to four hundred fifty, whatever.
That's a lot of different.
Five, one and a half people, it's pretty darn good. You all, as part of that.
Oh my gosh.
Not a thing to look at.
Um, okay, well, I had a question about miscellaneous, but, um, Elsworth cleared that up. I don't have a president's report, I, I appreciate you all carrying on without me last month, I tried to convince the nominating committee that they made a poor choice, cause I missed meetings, but, anyway, you get what you get. Um, announcements from members?
I've got one.
Yeah.
Uh, you may have noticed on the, uh, front page of the packet that, uh, see my name is no longer being with Derek. Uh, so, uh, I've, I've kind of determined that I identify as a non-conformant person, and as a part of that, I'd prefer to go by DJ looking for it, so.
I wondered about that.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Um, committee reports, I guess. You were in, you were mentioned, right, somehow?
I have the, uh, foundation friend's report.
Yeah.
I'm not on that committee anymore.
I swear I saw your name in here.
It's a one-person committee. I can tell you what I think about whatever you want to hear.
Adlib.
Okay, so, you perform, um. So I, I guess I was, the memorandum of understanding.
Oh yeah, I do, I do have the friends foundation, yeah. So this was my first, uh, meeting with the foundation. Um, there were four new board members and it was the first in-person, in-person meeting since the pandemic had started, but they did, uh, offer an online option as well, uh, three uh, people attended that way, um, and so then, with so many new people and being back in person, we introduced ourselves. Um, the committee chairs described their committee work, um, which led to us um, filling out a form, um, spec- specifying how we would support the foundation and committees of interest. Um, other work included, um, conflict of interest disclosure, and then that same, um supplemental health insurance that is available to city volunteers. Uh, the main work was that we did approve the new corporate resolution. Um, and, uh, we had an update from Elsworth. And, uh, we then also had the memorandum of understanding, and so if there are questions about that, and then our final item from the meeting was that we both recognized and expressed our, our, the foundation, the Friends Foundation's appreciation for Patty's service, so.
So, do I need to sign this?
Yes, I have a copy for you after the.
Okay, okay. Um, communications. So I use the, things in the packet. And then, we're to the consent agenda to approve the disbursements and the meeting minutes from last month.
Um, quick edit, and the committee reports, uh, the Friends Foundation report, my name is misspelled twice.
That's all right, it happens more often than not, so. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or do people have changes?
So moved to approve the consent agenda would be another change.
That I have a suggestion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then moving on to the agenda for next month, uh, like we've got the annual statistics and financials. Which could mean it's a bigger discussion or could be not, um. We will vote on the policy, the bylaws, if you have things. If, if you haven't really looked at them and you do look at them and you have things that you think need to be clarified or changed, you might send me a message so that we could get it taken care of, uh, before the August meeting. Uh, are we forming a finance committee? Who are you asking? I'm just asking the table.
If there is going to be a form of finance, we make sense to start forming it because the budget work will start soon, if the budget really have anything to do with that, um, I don't know, whatever you think.
I think, you know, we had, historically, we had discussion about whether we really had a good sense of this and whether a couple people could take on I have your responsibility to really understand the financial statements.
That's right, I remember talking.
Right, and because you're abbreviating the reports and we were.
If somebody might do a deeper dive, and they could maybe take some of it, well.
Cause we kind of sign off without being very thorough about looking at it, especially when we're putting together budgets and such.
Well, this is a, really a good time for a couple of reasons too, because since it'll be Jada's first full budget cycle in renewal. She'll have a little bit different way of, of doing that from previous folks, whatever, so everybody's gonna come together at the end of the year.
How would it work? I mean, obviously, you all set the budget, right, I mean, you I don't think you need a couple trustees sitting in on how much you should spend on, you know.
Excellent.
Digital.
I think a common model for a finance policy on a public library board is that before a meeting the policy committee would come together and look at the finances in the packet, that sort of, if they have any questions, we'd talk about it. They would do that more line by line look, and how, and that meeting, they will say, oh, can we compare this to last year's operating numbers or
Right.
remind me again, how does it all look under this, and when we bring it to the table, it is more sort of approval ready, because you have your finance folks who hopefully have some interest or experience in doing that deep look. And be able to say, yeah, we have already looked at this, and this is.
Okay, so, that what we'll look at next year will be FY twenty-two, next month rather. So, so if the committee would be beginning in FY twenty-three. If someone, if this interests somebody, let me know, I don't know, I don't have a sense here, people want the finance committee?
I think it makes sense to have one, I think it depends who you want and whether you think it's appropriate for a board to better understand the financial standing and documents on it, I've never seen a situation where people say, I can't wait to be on a finance day.
So it sounds like it would be a committee to review financial reports before the board packet is distributed.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's about a ten-minute obligation meeting before the meeting.
I don't even know.
They have a couple of you sit down and go through that before a meeting.
It's possibly a unit, although there were issues we could have.
Not a huge time.
It also could be sort of a as either, I mean, maybe that group would have feedback of like, if you lay it out differently, people are gonna get it faster, like, try this and
Right.
do your news report, but also do a narrative, or stop doing the narrative, that's distracting, I mean, I think it could just be a, a smaller group discussion about what they are, because they're so familiar, it won't take long to learn even the deep sort of stuff in both of it, so if anybody's like kind of interesting, but I don't think they have a background knowledge. I know the news reports don't look glamorous, but they're not, I mean, as far as that kind of, uh, the options that are out there. It's, it's something that we could teach anybody who hasn't been personally.
Okay, so. I'm less than what interested in it, I just am worried about time coming, cause I'm each, my school year starts, and it's like, I'm still a brand new teacher, and also I have a brand new baby, so, um I have like two time constraints on my life right now, but I'd be interested.
If it's an.
Also, I completely, um, remember Tom, is it Tom saying that he's a numbers guy? So I would like mention it to him, not, I'm gonna nominate him, cause he's not here. But I remember, he's there now. But I remember him saying that, uh, he is, he, he's a numbers person. I'm not a numbers person, but I'm, I have.
It sounds like it would be not too much of a, of a time commitment. And I'm assuming it would be like a year long. Cause we don't get numbers.
I mean, if somebody's miserable, we could, they could swap out.
Okay, I'll work on a finance committee. Carol, I think you need two people. Actually, two, two or three, not more than three, because then we have a problem.
I would, I would do it if there's more than one person.
Okay.
Cause I, we're talking about this.
All right.
Oh, yeah, we have a committee. There are a lot of things like.
Yeah.
You're gonna take on news.
No one would volunteer.
I didn't think no one would. I just had split my mind that we had talked about that, but, but, but we have talked about it. So Claire, it sounds like it's something that you could be, you could do. And then if you, if it doesn't work, which if it ends up being an email thing.
Yeah, that would work great, better than like a scheduled meeting or a ten minutes before the meeting would be fine also, but I commit a whole lot of time.
Well, I was a basket case for the first two years of my first daughter's life, so I think you're good.
I can only, I can, yeah. I can rarely commit to like a shower and getting the dishes done, so.
Hey, you've only missed one meeting when you're on labor, so.
I was actually, yeah, I was actually. Well, yeah, I mean.
That's why the bylaws look at the virtual. Okay, so I believe that we are ready to adjourn.